I think so. You think so?
The Monday, May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, City of Andalia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, council, you've had an opportunity to review the study session minutes and the council meeting minutes of April eighteenth. Are there any comments or corrections? Being done, they stand approved, and that brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards. And we have three proclamations we're going to present today to some of our Andalia Butler students who have qualified for the Ohio Special Olympics this summer and will be competing at the Ohio State University. So I'd like to start with Mr. Brady Schneider, if he'd come to the podium. Good, good, good. We have prepared a special proclamation for you to honor you, and what I'd like to do is read it to you. That's okay.
Okay.
Says, whereas the City of Andalia seeks to recognize and honor outstanding citizens and their accomplishments, and whereas the Special Olympics provides valuable opportunities for children and adults with disabilities to discover and experience the joy and confidence associated with taking part in sporting events, and whereas Brady Schneider, a student at Andalia Butler High School, has qualified for the State of Ohio Special Olympics competition being held in June of this year in swimming and track. And whereas Brady will compete on May twenty-second, was that next Sunday?
Yeah.
All right. In a Special Olympics regional qualifier for weightlifting with a chance to advance to the state meet, and whereas the achievement and qualifying for the state competition can only be accomplished through hard work, dedication, spending numerous hours honing their skills, and whereas Brady Schneider encompasses the spirit and the heart of the Special Olympics Athletes' Oath. Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in my attempt. And whereas Brady Schneider will represent the City of Andalia and Andalia Butler Schools on June twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth at the Ohio Special Olympic Summer Games to be held on the campus of the Ohio State University. Now, therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by the virtue and authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Andalia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, as Brady Schneider Day, and on behalf of council, staff, and all of our citizens, I hereby express our pride, congratulations, and sincere hope for victory at the Ohio Special Olympic Summer Game. Congratulations. You're outstanding for it.
Can I say something?
Yeah, I do. I do say, um, thank you for, um, my courses, there's amazing clock me on next week and what, where was it? And my kids also think coming out there here to help me to do some work and thank you, I gotta say, but, um, my friends from Morton for what's there was Jackson, no, Ashley and Brian. Our honor. And I do better picks for my, um, coaches and thank you for coming for my day.
Thank you very much, thank you for coming. There you go, and that is for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. And next I'd like to invite Ashley and her family to come up. You know the drill now. How you doing?
I'm good.
All right. You're excited, aren't you? Excited to be here. Well, if it's okay with you, I would like to read your proclamation to you. Okay. Whereas the City of Andalia seeks to recognize and honor outstanding citizens and their accomplishments, and whereas the Special Olympics provides valuable opportunities for children's and adults to discover and experience the joy and confidence associated with taking part in sporting events. And whereas Ashley Arnett, a student at Morton Middle School, has qualified for the State of Ohio Special Olympics Gymnastic Competition being held June of this year. And whereas the achievement of qualifying for the state competition can only be accomplished through hard work and dedication, spending numerous of hours honing their skills, and whereas Ashley Arnett encompasses the spirit and the heart of the Special Olympics Athletes' Oath, again, which is, let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in my attempt. And whereas Ashley Arnett will represent the City of Andalia and the Andalia Butler Schools on June twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth at Ohio Special Olympic Summer Games to be held on the campus of the Ohio State University. Now, therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by the virtue and authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Andalia, do hereby proclaim Thursday, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, as Ashley Arnett Day, and on behalf of City Council and our staff and our citizens, I hereby express our pride and congratulations and sincere hope for victory at the Ohio Special Olympic Summer Games. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I want to say Jackson is my best friend. We like to laugh together. Thank you, Jackson, for being my best friend.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Jackson Clark and his family could come up. There you are. Come on.
How is everyone doing tonight?
How are you?
Good.
All right. Okay. Keep me on track here. If you don't mind, I'm going to like to read your proclamation, is that okay?
Okay.
All right. It's kind of lengthy, so just kind of bear with me here.
All right.
All right. Whereas the City of And, it's kind of like you've probably heard some of this before.
Yeah.
Whereas the City of Andalia seeks to recognize and honor outstanding citizens and their accomplishments. And whereas the Special Olympics provides valuable opportunities for children and adults with disabilities to discover and experience the joy and confidence associated with taking part in sporting events. And whereas Jackson Clark, a student at Morton Middle School, has qualified for the State of Ohio Special Olympics Gymnastic Competition being held in June of this year, and whereas the achievement of qualifying for the state competition can only be accomplished through hard work, dedication, and spending numerous hours honing their skills, and whereas Jackson Clark encompasses the spirit and the heart of the Special Olympics Athletes' Oath. Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in my attempt. And whereas Jackson Clark will represent the City of Andalia and the Andalia Butler Schools on June twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth at the Ohio Special Olympic Summer Games to be held on the campuses of the Ohio State University. Now, therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Andalia, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, as Jackson Clark Day, and on behalf of City Council, staff, and all of our citizens, I hereby express our pride, congratulations, and sincere hope for victory at the Ohio Special Olympic Summer Games. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck, good luck.
Good luck.
We'll be waiting to hear a report.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay. All right, this time I'd like to ask Public Works Director, Mr. Rob Crone, to come forward. All right. Well, on behalf of my colleagues here on City Council, I'd like to present a proclamation to you as Director of Public Works, proclaiming that May fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, as Public Works Week in the, Public Works Week in the City of Andalia, and just want to say that we appreciate everything that Public Works does for our community. A lot of times they're the ones that are the most visible because they're out repairing roads, they're fixing water main breaks in the dead of winter, plowing our snow and taking care of the city. And really, that's what is so important for Public Works is that's what is visible to our businesses that locate here, our citizens that live here, and they're very valuable. And I just want you to know that our council really respects everything that they do, and we appreciate everything that they do for our city.
All right, thank you, and thank you all for recognizing Public Works. I know they are kind of the unsung heroes down there. A lot of times their work goes unnoticed and unheralded, but they are a great group of dedicated guys that, and girls, that provide some quality services to our citizens. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to do a lot of really good local government stuff after we swear in Mr. Brand, but if any of the families would like to leave at this time, that would be okay, and we wouldn't be offended. But certainly you're welcome to stay, and we like that, too.
All right. We'll move along. Next, we have the introduction and oath of office for firefighter Corey Brand.
I'll just invite Chief Folic to give a brief introduction of Mr. Brand.
Good evening, we appreciate the time this evening. Firefighter Corey Brand has been a part-time employee with us for a short period of time now and has completed all of his pre-hiring requirements to become a full-time employee. We're excited to have him. He's bringing us to the, to the nine full-time staff, the full, fills our nine positions we have currently authorized. Corey is currently in paramedic school and will finish that in December, right? Yes, chief. So we're excited to have Corey on board and working with us now, and we look forward to the day we can all celebrate his paramedic certification.
Absolutely, and I would just add on that Mr. Brand is part of the Ohio Army National Guard and is currently a resident of Tip City, so he's right here. Without further ado, we'll go ahead and we'll do his ceremonial swear-in, and I would invite his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Brand, to come up here. And it's my understanding that Steve, Mr. Brand, Corey's father, is going to pin his badge on him.
Are you going to give a speech? No, no. Here, let's do it, let's do it.
I, Corey Brand, saw this word, that I was in the Constitution, and will uphold laws in the United States and the State of Ohio. That I will in all respects observe provisions of the Charter. Of the Charter. And ordinances. And ordinances. Of the City of Andalia. And will faithfully discharge. And will faithfully discharge. The duties of the office. The duties of the office. A firefighter, paramedic, inspector. A firefighter, paramedic, inspector. With an envision of fire protection.
I would just point out that Mr. Brand has read the city's comprehensive plan, so there's that value add on having the Division of Fire lead the way and serve all aspects of the city. And firefighter cop may have led him along that way. Where are you guys going? The fun's just starting.
We don't feel invited, but thanks.
Losing the police department, too?
They must not want any money tonight.
Didn't realize I was going to need Kleenex for the council meeting.
Well, it's sixteen after seven, and we pretty much cleared the room. So I think we're doing pretty well. Okay, so we're going to move on to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. And if you are viewing online and would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. Being done, we'll move on to the City Manager's Report where we have some information items. Mr. Went.
The, yes, thank you very much, Your Honor. A couple of things that I'd like to say. First off, congratulations to the team who hosted Party in the Park. There was a great flow at Halke Park this weekend. Also, we had our Community Paint Day for our first mural at one fifty-five East National Road. Assistant City Manager Holloway reported to me that over fifty people attended and helped paint that, so that was a big success for community engagement. I know that everybody is waiting for this, and Community Garage Sale Weekend is May nineteenth through the twenty-second. We have online signup and will be releasing that. We've also extended that to allow Butler Township residents to sign up at their request. Shred Day, of course, is the twentieth, and it'll run nine AM till noon this Friday. That's free to all of our residents. Will be closed on May thirtieth in celebration of Memorial Day. And we've got our summer schedule for council meetings, and so the next regularly scheduled meeting will be June twentieth at seven PM. It says here that study session will start at six PM, but I would free up your calendars to start a little bit earlier, and I'll just verify that with staff tomorrow. That concludes my report, Your Honor, thank you.
All right, thank you. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of the night, that being Resolution twenty-two dash R dash thirty-nine. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
Sorry. Financial contributions to the Historical Society of Andalia Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city received a letter from the Historical Society of Andalia Butler requesting an annual donation of fifteen thousand dollars, which is appropriated in council's budget. I shouldn't say they requested that. We've budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for an annual donation for maintenance-related projects to include the cost of the annual business organization membership for the city. It's necessary for council to take formal action to authorize the donation and the amount.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution twenty-two R thirty-nine.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve Resolution twenty-two dash R dash thirty-nine. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution twenty-two dash R dash forty.
This is a resolution for engineering for traffic signal for Northwoods Boulevard and I seventy-five southbound ramps.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city and ODOT have agreed to partner in the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Northwoods Boulevard and I seventy-five at the southbound ramps. The city conducted a traffic signal warrant analysis. ODOT confirmed the need for the signal at this location, and this relates to our safe and secure and enhancing infrastructure policy goals. Previously, the city paid a total of fifteen percent of the total project costs, of course, fronting the engineering portion of it. Therefore, I recommend that we waive formal bidding and enter into an agreement with Choice One Engineering for the engineering and preparation of construction drawings for a new traffic signal at Northwoods Boulevard at I seventy-five southbound ramps at the submitted cost of thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-two dash forty.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis that we approve Resolution twenty-two dash R dash forty as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution twenty-two dash R dash forty-one.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application for the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for nature works grant funds for the construction of a restroom structure, structure at Robinette Park.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This resolution is necessary in order for the city to be able to submit a joint application with the Montgomery County Board of DD. The proposed costs for the project include one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the maximum being able to be asked for from the grant, as well as seventy-five thousand for Board of DD and seventy-five thousand from City of Andalia.
Have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution twenty-two dash R dash forty-one as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve Resolution twenty-two dash R dash forty-one as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have several ordinances in our first reading, the first one being Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of one million three hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding taxable land acquisition notes, Series twenty-twenty-one, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The land acquisition note issued for the acquisition of land at Stone Quarry Crossing Development matures on July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. The total amount due is one million three hundred ninety-nine thousand in principal plus interest. The two thousand twenty-two budget included an interest payment of twenty-five thousand. The maturity date on the new note will be July two thousand twenty-three. Debt is scheduled to be off, paid off in full in two thousand thirty-six.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two in its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum aggregate principal amount of one million four hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding various purpose notes, Series two thousand twenty-one, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The fire engine two, two thousand sixteen bond anticipation note issued for the fire engine matures on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. This note was combined with the fire ladder truck, two thousand twenty-one bond acquisition note, anticipation note, excuse me. The, in order to save on the costs of issuance, the total remaining amount due is one million seven hundred and forty thousand plus interest. The amount in the principal payment for the engine is forty-eight thousand and two hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents for the ladder truck. Two thousand twenty-two budget includes a pay-down amount of forty-five thousand and outstanding principal on the fire engine, a hundred and fifty thousand on the ladder truck, plus an interest payment of seventeen thousand four hundred. The maturity on the new note will be August two thousand twenty-three. The debt on the fire engine is scheduled to be paid off in two thousand twenty-six and two thousand thirty-one for the fire ladder truck.
Have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance twenty-two twenty-three in its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three in its first reading. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four.
An ordinance rezoning one hundred and sixty-three acres of land generally located west of Peters Pike between West National Road and Stone Quarry Road from planned unit development to Office Industrial Park and public facilities and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a city-initiated proposal to rezone Stone Quarry Crossings from planned unit development to Office Industrial Park and public facilities. The proposed rezoning area consists of one hundred and sixty-three total acres, of which thirty-two point eight is proposed to be public facilities, one hundred and thirty point two is proposed to be rezoned to Office Industrial Park. Planning Commission voted three to zero to recommend approval of this request.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four in its first reading. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Next, we have ordinances in our second reading, the first one being Ordinance twenty-two dash sixteen. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance amending section six seventy-eight point one zero of the codified ordinances of the City of Andalia, Ohio relating to fireworks.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance twenty-two dash sixteen on fireworks display relates to, in two thousand twenty-one, the Ohio passed House Bill one seventy-two into law. The new law takes effect July first of this year and permits displaying, which also means setting off fireworks legally on certain holidays and celebrations. The new law places limited restrictions on where, how, and who can discharge fireworks, and it also has little regulation on the size of fireworks that Ohioans can purchase and set off. This has a potential to be disruptive and dangerous for our residents. As a home rule city, the City of Andalia can establish local prohibitions, and I recommend passage of this ordinance to prohibit displaying of fireworks here in town.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And if there's anyone online that would like to speak to this ordinance, please raise your virtual hand. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance twenty-two dash sixteen in its second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash sixteen in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Ordinance twenty-two dash seventeen in its second reading.
An ordinance amending the Andalia Zoning Code, Section twelve eighteen oh three B, prohibited uses to prohibit the retail sale prohibited uses to prohibit the retail sales, manufacturing, and wholesaling of one point three G and certain one point four G fireworks.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a city-initiated text amendment to the city's planning and zoning code to prohibit the manufacturing and wholesale of both one dot three G and one dot four G fireworks and to prohibit the retail sales of one dot three G and one dot four G fireworks, excluding novelties, trick noisemakers, and wire sparklers within the City of Vandalia. The Planning Commission voted three to zero to recommend approval of this request.
Thank you. And since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to make comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comments, and if there's anyone online that would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty-two seventeen in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Follak to approve ordinance twenty-two dash seventeen in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next we have ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen in its second reading.
An ordinance rezoning point nine nine six acres of land located at thirty-three twenty-four Benchwood Road from gateway business to highway business and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
Your Honor, the applicant RVP Engineering LLC on behalf of EROP has submitted an application requesting a rezoning of the property located at thirty-three twenty-two Benchwood Road from gateway business to highway business. The purpose of the request is to allow for the construction of an automatic express car wash. The Planning Commission voted three to zero to recommend denial of the proposed amendment to the city's zoning map.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, if anyone would like to make comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment.
Good evening, Rob Dixon from Decatur, Illinois. I'm a member of EROP, one of the applicants on this. The, we are requesting a change of zoning as well read. The staff put a memo together, and in that memo, they identified the key difference between the gateway business and the highway business as being a destination for the gateway business versus more of a convenience for the highway business. They also said in the memo, this property was intended for more destination type of business. They implied a car wash is a convenience and not so much of a destination. A destination is a place where someone is going or being sent, a place where someone will make a special trip to visit. Convenience is a state of being able to proceed with something with little effort or difficulty. When you look at the types of businesses allowed underneath the gateway business as it's zoned today, a lot of them are convenience-driven. A fast food restaurant looks for ease of use in that they are useful and helpful to their customers. They rely on their product and their service to eventually become a destination. Our car wash business is not different. We start out as a convenience to customers. We rely on our product and our service to become a destination. As mentioned in previous meetings, over sixty percent of the people who wash a car with us are members. A member is somebody who pays a monthly fee and can wash unlimited times throughout the month. We're definitely a destination place for them, again, over sixty percent. During the Planning Commission, they liked the wash, they liked the amount of landscaping we put together, and they felt our purpose felt fit within the twenty twenty comprehensive plan. The issue raised after public comments were closed was spot zoning. Staff is informing that spot zoning is not that much of an issue, but I feel compelled to at least bring it up here that there is spot zoning that does exist in Vandalia today. I ask if you are concerned about spot zoning to ask me further questions. I want to respect your time and not go into that today. The Plan Commission stated a couple times after public comments were closed that highway business zoning is just a couple lots to the west. Just simply build your car wash a little bit further to the west. Building further west creates additional risk for us. We lose line of sight from the thirty thousand traffic count at Miller and Benchwood. That is important to us. Commercial businesses support each other. When someone pumps gas at the Speedway across the street, they can see our car wash, and they will come over to Lee Butler Township, come over to Vandalia and wash their car. We have success being near gas stations. Further west, there isn't any commercial development over there. It's a bunch, it's a number of residential homes, as you're aware of. So we can't help each other in that scenario today. Competition is further west on Dixie Drive as well. At the end of the day, we can't afford to make a four to a five million dollar investment in this property if we go further west. I know we'll talk about the conditional use in a little bit, but what I do want to identify here is that during the Planning Commission, the members of that committee identified that if, is there a way we can put a conditional use underneath the gateway business? They looked for, is there even an opportunity to do that? Finding out there is not, they motioned to deny it as well read. The chair, their chairman voted against it, acknowledging that we do fit, they like, we, we, as you drive by that location and you see a car wash here, nobody's going to say that doesn't belong there. And that was part of what my interpretation of the councilmen's or the Plan Commission's direction was when they voted against that. During the study session, the, a couple items were brought up, noise levels, and I want to identify that real quick here. Our ambient noise that leaves that comes out of a car wash when you stand on the sidewalk is the same ambient noise that you would have coming from the road itself. Stacking, the mayor identified in Huber Heights, there's some concern about stacking there. And I supplied a memo to the group for the first reading that the car wash in particular has thirty-two vehicles of stacking that's available. And I provided our first concept to the group, has the very same amount of stacking, thirty-two cars. Now, we have the ability to increase that stacking with a small variance. We can expand stacking by twenty-eight to thirty-four percent. That is nine to eleven cars. So again, going from thirty-two cars to either forty-one or forty-three cars. To increase by nine, four foot variance from the twenty-five foot setback to the property to the west, which is zone residential, would be needed for that. So we can address the concerns of the stacking by having a slight variance change. Councilman Follak, you identified that there's only one lane in our proposal. This variance will increase it to two lanes. These variances, what I want to share with you is, these variances are only required because the adjacent property to the west is zone residential. If it was zoned commercial, these varying, we would be compliant by coming over into that area, just to make that clear. So speaking of the adjacent residential lot, I have spoken to the brokers, that property is under contract, and the intended purpose is for commercial use. I have spoken to the individual who is on the contract. He requested his name be withheld, but he has identified that he is in negotiations with commercial tenants. So I do expect you guys will see a rezoning for that to commercial use. Again, that was brought up during the study session as well, which why I bring it up here again, and it can impact the variance that I'm requesting, not requesting, but the variance I identified. Now, I understand today, you know, I'm not here, you know, requesting a zoning change for the residential lot. Obviously, that's not what I'm here for, but I'm just providing this as a precursor to what is coming soon. So in summary, both the Planning Commission and the council imply the desire for someone to use the, to use the existing building as is, as a restaurant. It's newer, it's never been occupied. You might find it odd, I actually agree with you. It would be great for a restaurant to go in there and use it. I've been a commercial banker for twenty-five years before I've, before I joined this company, and restaurants aren't flocking to this location. According to the National Restaurant Association, they estimate twenty percent success rate for all restaurants. Sixty percent of restaurants will fail within their first year of operation. Eighty percent fail within five years. Asking someone to make a three million dollar investment into something that has a twenty percent success rate in five years is rather risky. And that's why you see more of an interest from groups like us on a property like this. Changing the zoning from gateway business to highway business along with the conditional use will turn this dark business into an operating business. It'll put another commercial lot to use, which will increase the demand for the other lots that are in the area. We're going to be generating sales tax revenues as soon as we open up there for you. We typically hire seven to ten full-time equivalent employees as well. And again, as noted earlier, it allows us to invest four to five million dollars into your community. Our wash, once completed, will blend in with the existing businesses, as I said before. No one will say that, what is that car wash doing there? In fact, they will see it, experience it, and become a member and make it their destination, which is exactly what you expressed your desired business for this area. So we have the ability to address the concerns about the stacking, as noted earlier, and I asked that you approve the zoning from gateway business to highway business, as well as the conditional use, that'll be read later. The, if there's any questions that you guys have, I know you'll close it to public comment, if there's any questions you have after public comments close that you might want some clarification, I'd be more welcome to come back and speak to you.
My biggest question that you referenced was the stacking of cars, because there is a problem in Huber Heights and in Inglewood with this and this type of car wash, because they're very popular. There's no doubt that it can be successful. I guess what I would like to ask, Mr. Wen, has staff looked at the variance side of this in his proposal to have an opinion?
I have not reviewed those aspects of the variance. I would ask the assistant city manager if she's considered that. Is that new news? So, indicating that it came in after the discussion. If council thinks that it would be of value, perhaps we could, perhaps council would consider, rather than voting, tabling the issue until the June meeting so that that research and due diligence can be done. I don't know if that would be agreeable, but I have no way of acting on and analyzing what those, the implication of those variances would be at this moment. And so I would say, you know, you have the options of disapproving, disapproving and letting it be done, approving it as it is, knowing that it's possible to do, for them to submit for variances that would address councils' concerns, or possibly table and come back and look at those variances and whether that's something that should be pursued as a requirement in the, in the approval in legislation. Am I correct in that? Yes.
Well, if the majority of council would be willing to look at this through a variance, I can certainly support that.
Mr. Dixon, is that agreeable?
Of course, we'll listen to any opportunity. The current, I went on site today, and the parking lot itself, I don't know if the current owner received a variance or not, but the parking lot itself is already over into that twenty-five foot setback today. So again, I didn't do any research if the current restaurant got that variance or not, but short answer is, I would love to have an approval subject to the variance getting approved, i.e., if I can hear something along the lines that we're in agreement with this, if we get the variance approved, I would like that, and I don't know if that's even possible.
I'm more in favor of the, of the variance approach, in so much as I hate changing the underlying zoning to accommodate something, and I'd rather take...
I think we still have to rezone, because conditional use isn't permitted.
The conditional use is not...
Conditional use is not permitted in the gateway business, is that correct?
It's not permitted use?
Yeah.
That you're...
That's ugly.
That's correct. It has to be a highway. It either has to be the highway business or the zoning you just changed, OSPI or something, I can't remember that one.
I'm going to defer to the law director for a comment and a question here, but, you know, I guess one of the things that I would, that I would look at and point to council here as we consider, the gentleman's concerns are that over here, you've got the gateway business, right? You want to make it red into highway business. There's one RSF one that's in between. You know, is this the spot zoning or is this the spot zoning? That, you know, that's one thing that I would just ask for council's consideration, and I'm neutral on the matter, but the law director has a good question to ask.
Assuming that council's all right with the zoning, which is issue number one, the second issue was dealing with stacking, which I believe, that could be addressed not through a variance, but as part of the conditional use, that the conditional use would be approved subject to, because part of the conditional use approval is the traffic and the effects on the other neighborhood. So you could make it a conditional use, that this be two lanes or whatever it might be that you would require to address the stacking.
I think, so in light of what Mr. Dixon has brought up this evening, I, I think I'd be in favor of tabling it, tabling the re, the rezoning in the second reading, to give staff an opportunity to address some of the issues that Mr. Dixon brought up, but also, I mean, if it's indeed the property in between is under contract and is going to be potentially rezoned, we're going to be looking at rezoning that to either gateway business or highway business anyways, and I think that can be, you know, taken care of at the same, you know, it's, it's a companion piece. I still, even with forty-three spots, and I'm just speaking from my experience, you know, my concern is, what happens when there's fifty-five cars that went in there? And Benchwood Road is not the road that cars can sit on and wait to get in there. And I know some people would say it's not our problem, because Benchwood Road right there isn't in the City of Vandalia, but I think we have to take that into consideration, that forty-three car, I mean, that, it's a big, I mean, it's a big jump from thirty-two to forty-three. I mean, I appreciate that, but I still think we need to factor in, you know, because I know the one that the mayor's spoken about in Huber Heights, it backs up onto a public roadway quite frequently, and in Mr. Dixon's materials, it's thirty-two spots the same as what's the original proposal, but the one in Inglewood's the same issue. I mean, it back, it's got two lanes, and I, I would gather...
Inglewood's got three lanes.
Three. But I would gather it accommodates every bit of forty cars, and it can be backed up into the parking lot. Now, it's a little less of a problem there, because it's on private property and in somebody else's parking lot, but it's still an issue. And I mean, that's my biggest concern down here, is not so much the rezoning, not so much the conditional use, but the, where do these go, where do these cars go when they're full? Because Benchwood Road, it's only one lane going eastbound there, and for cars to be stopped there, waiting to get in there is potentially a big problem. So, but I, my, I'm inclined to table it, to give staff time to research some of the stuff that Mr. Dixon's brought up and make a proposal.
I would agree with that. Compelling arguments, new light, so I'd be willing to table that, give staff a chance.
Well, we can, we can do that, I mean...
I would propose that I come back on June twentieth, if that's okay.
Is that agreeable with you?
I will agree, yes. We have some deadlines, this costs us additional money to extend it. I would rather follow the city attorneys, and if you guys could approve it and give some conditions, change the conditional approval to require this, I would appreciate that, but again, I'm at your mercy, so I'll follow your lead.
Well, I think the biggest question we have here is, we don't know what that answer is right now to...
That's fair. That's why I said I'll follow your lead.
Unless...
Thank you, Your Honor.
Someone else can direct me that has a better idea on this. Okay.
Okay. Well, I think you can see that we want to try to make this work, but we just want to make it work for everyone.
I totally agree.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Move to table resolution.
Are we still in the public hearing, or did we end that? I don't think we ever formally ended the public hearing.
The Law Director's going to make me end the public comments right now.
Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion?
Would move to table the ordinance twenty-two eighteen in a second reading.
Until?
Until June twentieth of two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Your Honor.
With all the respect, all right, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman, was that Blakesley or Follak, Follak, to table ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen as a second reading to June twentieth. Any further comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yeah.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have ordinance, emergency ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen, Mr. McDonald.
An ordinance approving individual assessments amounts and directing the Finance Director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, this emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts related to stormwater fees, trash collection, and delinquent sewer and water.
Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open up a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak on ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment, and if you're listening online and would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. All right, I will close the public hearing, can I have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Farce and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have emergency ordinance twenty-two dash twenty.
An ordinance to revive, revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Vandelia, Montgomery County during the calendar year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and amending ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-one and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm requesting approval of the supplemental appropriation ordinance for the reasons that were stated and presented on in the study session, in the amounts that are on the screen and in the attachment in your packets.
Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment, or raise your virtual hand online. Being none, I will close the public hearing. So have a motion.
Your Honor, I'll move to approve emergency ordinance twenty-two dash twenty.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve ordinance twenty-two dash twenty as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have emergency ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one, Mr. McDonald.
Oh, this is a bond one. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of seven million five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the municipal public transportation system, including Capstone Way, Fieldstone Way, Airport Access Road, and Dog Lake Road by constructing, reconstructing, extending, opening, widening, widening, grading, draining, curbing, and paving and resurfacing in site preparation, installing stormwater, sanitary sewer, and water improvements, and acquiring any necessary interest in real property, together with all incidental work and related appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The thing that I will say is that the purpose of this is to bring water and wastewater utilities between airport, across airport access, out to Dog Lake Road. The purpose of this is to grow the pie and foment economic development within the city. The debt service for this project will likely be paid from the infrastructure fees and tax increment financing associated with development and utility revenues. The, that tax increment financing will be something that's forthcoming to you and has not been done yet, but will propose for your consideration. It's not likely at all to result in direct general fund expenditures.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open up a, or, excuse me, it is an emergency ordinance, open up public hearings, so if anyone would like to make comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment, or raise your virtual hand. Being none, I'll close the public hearing, have a motion.
Make a motion that we approve emergency ordinance twenty-two twenty-one.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Follak to approve ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one as an emergency. Any comments?
Yes, I have a question. Is this going to follow the procedure that we did for the one point five million, whereas we estimated it would be one point five, it came out to be one point two three six, so we had to pay the difference down on principle? Is that the same thing we're going to have to do here, or not?
I, I'm not a really a hundred percent sure for this one. I, I believe that probably relates directly to the bond anticipation notes, which I think are distinct from the bond. In the case of the bonds, the bond that we just issued for the infrastructure, the roof and HVAC project, we originally came to you for ten million, it was nine million, and so they were issued and sold at that number that's closer to nine million, so there's not the discrepancy. I believe that will be the case, because these are bonds and not the notes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. You almost stumped me.
What can I say?
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. And that brings us to reports from boards and commissions. The first item is the conditional use at thirty-three twenty-four Benchwood Road, and per our prior discussion, I believe we are going to be bringing that back on June twentieth. So there's no vote needed at this time.
That is correct, without the zoning, we can't do a conditional use.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll move on to...
Executive.
We have the record, Records Commission meeting minutes of April twenty-ninth to approve, any comments on those? All right, we'll move on to the April bill listing in the amount of three million six hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents, and a list of the April expenses over fifty thousand, and the April purchase card detail in the amount of thirty-one thousand, twelve dollars and twenty-one cents. All right, and that brings us to council comments, Mr. McDonald.
Just to advise everybody that our days of raising your virtual hand are almost to an end, we can only do it for the next meeting in June, because as of July first, unless they extend it, we will not be allowed to have virtual meetings anymore.
Okay. Mr. Went.
Your Honor, I would just reiterate some of the things that I stated in the blue letter. There's a lot of really good things that are going on in the city right now, a lot of really nice momentum, and I, I would just say I'm thankful to staff for their support in this, and their commitment to serving the residents of Vandelia.
Thank you. Mr. Ayers.
Nothing to like, thank you.
Councilman Follak.
Yeah, just a couple things real quick. One is to echo, I think, Mr. Went's comments and his information items about the Community Paint Day and the party in the park this past weekend. I stopped by at both events, and there were good crowds at, at both events, so kudos to staff and all the departments that participated in that. Also, I wanted to thank staff and the mayor for making the arrangements for the proclamations tonight for the, the three students that are attending the Special Olympics. I think any time that we can highlight those community achievements is, is good for, for the organization, for the city. And I know we had a proclamation earlier for National Public Works Week, but also just wanted to recognize, it's also EMS Week for, I guess, the nation, not just the state, but, and to recognize the members of the Division of Fire that work in our emergency medical services. And then also, I know Chief Alt House alerted, or alluded to it during his presentation, the study session, but it is also National Police Week. And twenty twenty-one is now the deadliest year in American law enforcement history. Prior to that, it was two thousand and one with the nine eleven incident, but now, in twenty twenty-one, we had four hundred and seventy-two law enforcement officers that died in the line of duty in, last year, including five in Ohio. And of course, you know, we have a local officer, Lieutenant Bohannon, who was killed in the line of duty in December of nineteen sixty-nine, so I just think it's always important that we recognize that week and, and the commitments that law enforcement professionals make in our communities. And then the last thing is just to congratulate, because since we don't have another meeting, the graduating class of twenty twenty-two, I think, staff and students, they have a whole week here of activities, I know, and graduation is next Monday night? Yeah, next Monday night, a week from tonight, so congratulations to staff and students and the graduates from this year's senior class. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Farce.
Nothing this evening, thank you, though.
Councilman Blakesley.
Echo what Councilman Follak said, as well as, good luck to Ashley Bradley, or Brady and Jackson at the Special Olympics, and with their spirit, they are already winners, so I can just see that excitement in, in their eyes. And then seeing their enthusiasm warms my heart, so good luck to them, that's all I have.
All right. Councilwoman Woods.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
That brings us to Vice Mayor Lewis.
No, thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. And I also just wanted to mention the proclamations we did here this evening for the three students, Brady, Schneider, Ashley, Arnett, and Jackson Clark. I think everyone could sense their enthusiasm, and this meant a lot to them and their families, and we appreciate everything that they're doing, and looking forward to following their results.
And if you do that too much more often, we need Kleenex down the table.
And our, our fourth proclamation tonight for public works, Mr. Kronk didn't show quite the enthusiasm, but we could, we could tell you were excited on the inside. All right, thank you. That's all I have for now. It's advised that we go into executive session to review the collective bargaining strategy. If I can have a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
I need a second.
Second.
Candace.
And then I need a roll call, sorry. Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, the motion carries seven zero.